The order, what July I said, the date 2023, would place the flag of Gina Collins, innocent pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business on the agenda is approval of the regular meeting minutes of July 3rd. I take it that you guys have had a chance to look over those, and if there are no questions, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
I make a motion.
Motion by Clayton.
Second.
Second by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is approval and ratification of bills. Everyone also got a copy of the bills Friday to look over the weekend, so... If there are no questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the business.
I have a question. The eighteen thousand, three dollars and three cents to O'Reilly's Auto Parts, that's a pretty hefty bill for an auto parts store.
It is. One of them, there was, one big bill was for the motor for Tim's Tahoe that had to be replaced, and then they bought a piece of equipment for changing out freon, is that what it is, Erin? So that was about sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars over there.
And then, the infrastructure?
That is the paving of the street behind the mall. All the, all the big full street paving goes into infrastructure. If it's just patchwork, it goes into street maintenance and repairs.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Terry. Does anyone else have any questions? Motion by Billy, second, by Clayton. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. We've got some visitors here this afternoon to speak, so we'll have Ms. Chelsea come up first and tell you what she's, what she's interested in.
Hi. My name is Chelsea Lashley. I'm one of the coordinators for Scare on the Square. It's the Halloween festival that we've had here in Litchfield the last few years in some form or another. Before COVID hit, we had a pretty successful turnout year after year, and now that things are kind of back to normal, we're just wanting to do our full event like we used to, shut the square down and have entertainment, festival, vendors, all that stuff. So, just looking for permission to get the square shut down and...
What, what date did you say you were looking at?
Friday the thirteenth of October.
Friday the thirteenth. That's, that's a good night for a Halloween party, isn't it? You want to rethink that?
Did you run it in conjunction with East Main Market last year?
Yeah, we have the last few years.
And we won't have anything going on East Main Market?
Yes.
Perfect.
So I guess the big question is, she's asking to be able to shut the square down that week, that night?
Right. I'll make a motion to do that.
Does Judge Henderson have me, since I saw that he owns the square?
Judge, what do you think?
Whatever the council's choice, I think much obliged to the fact that...
There you go. That was easy. Terry.
We should have sent him to meet at Stonely, the state or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we need to ask for permission.
Yeah, please.
Motion.
Motion by Billy, second, by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
There you go, young lady. Thank you. And you don't have to hang around if you don't want to.
I don't have time.
No. All right. Judge Henderson, will you come up next and speak to us? What, what Judge Henderson and Elsa are here to speak to is the property at 1150 Elizabeth Town Road. It's okay if everybody will kind of move that up to this part of the meeting so that, so that we don't have to keep them here very long either, so...
Yeah, well, I just want to say, I'm not here to complain about anything, so that's, that's a plus for you all, so... The mayor had asked me to come and try to explain, and he had told me there were some questions, general concern questions about the property on Highway 62, where we intended to build the farmer's market. Just to give you a little backstory, if you've got time, I had spoke with Warren Beeler for several, probably over a year ago, I guess, and Grayson County is one of four counties in the state that does not have a farmer's market. And the way other counties and cities are utilizing them is not just particularly with the farmer's market, per se. Now, there's a grant. I think some of the other council members may have keyged in on that we could get through the state for up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for building the facility. And I think the actual question was cost of, you know, what's this thing going to cost? Well, it's sort of a loaded question. So, I, I took it upon myself to just figure out a size of a building, a hundred by two hundred, which is a enormous building, twenty thousand square feet, which I don't, do you know what the square footage of the center is?
About that.
About, about twenty thousand? So, and that, that's with the offices too, right? So if you took, if you went to the center and you, and you took out the offices, that's how big of a facility you would have basically under roof. So, got a price on the building and got a price on the blacktop and some other things. You're looking at probably, if we stayed with that size facility, you're looking at probably about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the building, the concrete, the metal, everything. Of course, now, that would have to be bid out, but, I mean, I'm sort of in that type of business too, so I know these folks that can give you these estimates on this, and that, that is supplying the labor, the concrete, the concrete labor, everything to build the facility. I know there is a question about blacktop. Blacktop right now, somewhere around a hundred, a hundred dollars a ton being laid. Now, the, the parking lot, once again, that's another loaded question because how big do we want to make it? If we made it a hundred feet on each side and two hundred in the back, you're looking at probably about two thousand tons, so you're looking at about, about two hundred thousand dollars, the blacktop facility. Doesn't have to be that big, so, I mean, I'm just trying to give you some numbers about, you know, about what it would cost. So, the bathrooms are included in that bid with the building also. That would be, that would be two, two toilets, urinal men's, and three toilets in the women's. And I talked to Elsa about this also, and I know there were some questions about who was going to take care of the facility. And I suggested to the mayor that if this goes forward, I mean, the county wants to work with the city. We want to work with Clarkson, we want to work with Caneyville, I mean, we're sort of all in this together type thing. I, I would probably suggest maybe taking a couple people off of the tourism board, the council, taking a couple magistrates, and forming a board to determine what size facility you actually want to build, and come back with the council, come back to the magistrates. They might be on the tourism, you know, tourism board that's, you know, on that, on that board. You know, I don't know what their financial situation is as far as tourism, but this is something that could probably benefit more, them more, and when I say them, it's going to benefit the city and the county as well. So, I would, I would recommend that tourism, and Elsa's probably not going to like this, but I mean, I would recommend that tourism probably be over the daily operations of the facility. Now, farmer's market's going to take precedent over anything, so that's going to be on a Wednesday and a Saturday. And there's a couple of cities, Bowling Green, I think Owensboro does it, they bring in portable ice rinks. I think you've already checked on that, right? Portable roller skating rinks. And that would be a perfect type facility to do something like that in. I also had them figure this building, of course, it, it, it raised the cost a little bit, but where you could put, you could actually utilize a facility in the wintertime also, but I wouldn't say we'd necessarily have to do it now. I just don't want to get the cart before the horse because we don't even know what size building we want to build, or what, you know, what we want to do at this point. But you could put in the clear glass garage doors. Some of the facilities, Denny, I think you, didn't you send pictures to everybody?
I don't know if I've sent pictures, I don't think, but I've showed a few.
Warren went around the state and took a lot of pictures of different facilities in different counties and said, you know, this is what you can do. Some of them was on an astronomical scale, some of them was on a small scale. It just depends on what they're actually doing with the facility. Some of them, they only use for farmer's market.
All of them different sized building?
All of them's different sizes. Different makes, different kinds. You know, you could dress it up as much as you want to. The facility that was bid was actually red iron building, and, but I would, I, I would, I would suggest it being built with the potential of being able to close it in at a later date.
So your estimates are open, your hard estimates or whatever you want to call them, they're open, it's an open building right now?
Open building, yes. Yeah, on all sides except the back where the bathrooms would be. And I told them to bid it where, in case, which I think would be great if, if tourism got on board with it, simply because they could use the facility to movie night. They can't, what'd you, when was it, Saturday, Friday night, Saturday night, y'all had a problem, had to move?
The last East Main concert we had to do.
Had to be moved to the fairgrounds. So, and so they was sort of, I think they already had the backup plan already, I mean, basically, but...
Well, there was no indoor backup plan, because everything was being utilized.
Normally, we would use the schools and those, you know, the schools has been very receptive to using those facilities, but unfortunately, all the schools are under repair right now. So, they had to do that, but there, that would eliminate any kind of issue later on in the future with some kind of problem that we might have if we have a concert, the Fiddlin' Festival just this past weekend. Of course, we had to do some of that in the courthouse, but there's, I think there's a lot of different things that you could probably do with the facility. She said movie night over there, of course, it would be, like I said, it'd be undercover, so it wouldn't really matter if it was raining or not, so... We just need to figure out, I mean, and I've got with the mayor, and I mean, we want to partner with the city. I mean, just last year, we tried, you know, we've done a sort of a partner agreement with you on some potential economic growth here that I think's probably going to go through here in the next few months, so we want to continue to do that. And, and if you don't, we understand. I mean, we completely understand because we're going to move forward with it. We might not move forward with it as fast if we had the city's cooperation, but we're, we're still going to move forward with it because of a lot of our, a lot of magistrate's constituents and stuff, they want to see this happen. Of course, some people's made mention that they think farmer's markets are sort of dying off a little bit. I think maybe that is to an extent, but I think the problem is, is they don't have a general location to go. If they had a general location to probably go, we would probably see more activity at those because all they got to do is drive through town on Saturday, and they're down here, they're across town, they're sitting up on every corner everywhere, and I think if they was in one general location, it'd probably, you'd probably see a whole lot more foot traffic at that, at that point, so... But I'm open for questions. I mean, if I, if I got to answer to them, I might not have them, but...
So the estimate on the building, did that also include like the electrical work that...
No, electrical would be somewhere around, we've got people that can do that, and I think... Y'all still got somebody that does electrical?
Yes.
I'm looking at you.
Eric.
Okay. We've got someone at the, at the jail that's actually licensed electrician that does a lot of our stuff, especially something like that. Now, I wouldn't want them coming in and wiring this building or something, but as far as a facility like that, yeah, I definitely would want to overkill it, put a 400 amp service in it, which, I mean, that's something, you know, because if you add it on later and put air or heat or anything in it, you'd have the capability of running that, so... Plumbing, the fixtures and that type stuff would probably be about fifteen, about fifteen thousand to, to do that. And, but everything else is included in that one bid that I gave you. And other than that, I mean, unless you can think of something else, I mean, as far as cleaning the facility and taking care of the facility, I would say that we'd get with the inmates, you know, I'd get with Jason. Jason could do that. We could get one of the road crews to swing by there every day, or they'd have to coordinate with Elsa or whoever the director of tourism was to let them know that there was a, an event, you know, that night before, and they need to go in and, you know, clean up the facility, but I actually had them put a space in between the two bathrooms that would house tables and chairs. So that way, if, if we got some chairs and we had an event like the concert, we're not scattering all over the place trying to find chairs. So, also, but of course, you'd have to figure in the price of the chairs. Of course, we've got quite a few at the jail right now. We've just got a new, new bunch in, they, they get stacked on a trailer, you know, every time, and Jason lets, you know, you all have used them before. I think they used them up on the square Saturday, so that's, that's how many we had.
Mayor, what, you said the last time we talked about this, what type of utility lines were going to have to be run? Was it water or sewer or...
Sewer, but it's just, it, we'll just have to run it to the adjacent property.
There's, there is a, there's a manhole cover behind the, I call it the old stockyards, which is on the left going east on 62. And I talked with the, the owner and Charlie, what's Charlie's last name?
I can't remember, but...
Yes. I talked with him, and he said that he really wouldn't have a problem with it. He said, "I don't want you running across my parking lot, but I don't think that's going to be an issue because it's a further back of the parking lot, and we would try to stay on the right of way of the railroad tracks," is what we'd actually try to do, so... I also got with some, there might be a question come up about, well, that, that, when we first went out there, when the mayor called, Denny was with him, we went out there and looked at that, that piece of property, and Denny was concerned about, you know, it sort of drops down in the back a little bit, and I called Wallace, and luckily, I mean, me and Wallace went to school together, and I said, "Hey, it's, it's time to pony up. We need some, we need some help here." And he said, "Whatever you need, he said, "We'll get it filled up and no cost. You just have to haul it." Of course, we have the equipment to do that with, so we can, and it's not really that bad. It's, it's, it's almost a buildable site now, other than right in the very back next to the railroad track, so...
So is this the size building that you would recommend?
I, I would, I would want everyone to get together and discuss that and see what they thought would be the best option. You might even want it bigger, I don't know. But I, I think it would probably be a good idea to, you know, have a couple people, whatever you all deem necessary as far as being on the council, or if tourism gets involved in it, whether they come off that board, whether they come, a couple of the magistrates that's on the, you know, the, the building committees that we have. It, it's, it'd be completely up to, you know, that board, I would say, to, to get back and relay information to the council and to the magistrates. Of course, I've spoke to the magistrates. We've known this was going on for quite some time because of, because of Warren, and because he really wanted to do something here, you know, to, to get a farmer's market here. And of course, there's a grant, you know, just because there's a grant don't mean it's a good thing, but I mean, there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we could potentially tap into that, to help pay for this facility.
That was my question, Judge, the, the 550 is not counting the two hundred and fifty dollars matching fund?
No.
So in my mind, you'd think you'd want to at least build a five hundred thousand dollar facility to get two hundred and fifty thousand of it matched, to get the most bang for your buck that way.
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, that's...
That would be my thought. My other thought would be, I like the idea of tourism running it. Elsa feels that she can market this for other things.
I haven't asked her about that because it's not really my position.
I have, and she feels very good about it.
I mean, that was just a thought that I had.
I'm good about volunteering people, aren't I?
And then that way, because if you have, if, if the city and the county partners, then you have people calling my office, or you have people calling Lori and, you know, the city, and nobody knows if it's booked, nobody knows if it's out, nobody knows who's going to be there. And I think if it goes through one facility, one office, and Grayson County Tourism and Litchfield Tourism in the same office at the chamber, I think that would probably be the best option.
So both the tourist?
Yeah, but mainly it would be Elsa, because Grayson County Tourism sort of runs on a shoestring budget at this point right now, until possibly later on at a later date. And, and I'm not trying to throw Elsa under the bus, I'm just trying to stop a lot of confusion with a lot of people getting phone calls. So one person needs to get that call to rent that facility out or book something there or, and then the extension office also.
Yeah.
You know, you need somebody that works with the extension office, which would be Whitney down there, and they're, they're elated that we're doing something. They're, they're tickled to death. There was a couple instances that they had people sitting in their parking lot down there, and not one, not one person came by to the farmer's market, so... There was a lot of things that was in question to me when the property came up, but the most important thing to me was location, location, location. That was it. That was what was most important to me. And it just, you know, it happened fast, and, you know, we needed to act fast because we had someone that was trying to give more money for it at the time, and anyway, that's neither here nor there, but anyway, we, we ended up buying the property, and we have the property, and we have the deed in hand, the county does, so...
The other thing, is there any, I talked to Warren, and I don't think there's any problem with the money right now, but is it something we need to act pretty quickly on?
It's, it's something that I would get a plan together, yes, and get that money secured. I'm not, I'm not saying that after...
The election.
Elections have consequences, I mean, that's it. So, I mean, you don't know what's going to happen in an election cycle this November at the state level, so if, if, if nothing changes, I, I don't think it'd be an issue. I think that money's still going to be there, but if it does, I mean, things can change. So, I would say we would probably need to have something etched in stone at least by October, whatever we're going to do, if the council decides to, you know, to do this, you know, with the county. And like I said, we want to be as fair as possible. I don't want to call the shots on it, and I, I, that's why I suggest a, some type of board be formed to say, "Yeah, we decided we want to do this, and this is, we want to build it this big, and this is how we want to go," and sort of collaborate with, with Elsa, because, I mean, they're probably going to utilize it more than anybody, quite honestly. Well, Whitney also, I talked to her about it, and like you said, they're excited about it. She said that she was pretty familiar with the paperwork for the grant, and she would help us with all that, fill it out for us and... Yeah, and, and just so the council knows, I, I got with Warren, and of course, everybody knows Warren Beeler, I mean, he's Mr. Agriculture, you know what I'm saying? So, he, I told him, we even made a motion at the, at the, at fiscal court meeting, a couple meetings ago, to hire him to, to do the grant for us, and told him, you know, "Hey, we've hired you to do this," and he said, "Well, I'll do it for you, but I'm not charging you nothing." So Warren's basically going to, you know, help us with the grant process, so...
I'm really getting the cart really ahead of the horse on this one, but have you thought even naming rights? I have no conflict with this, but I think Warren Beeler would be an excellent Warren Beeler farmer's market, but like I said, I have no conflict with Warren Beeler named on it, since he's my brother-in-law.
Yeah, he's what?
He's my brother-in-law, of course, you knew that.
Really? I, I think that that would probably be left up to the council and fiscal court, you know, that, what that would need to be done, so... I mean, that's always a possibility, but it, I, I think, sometimes things like that happen very fast, and then sometimes you think, "Well, maybe we shouldn't have done that three or four down, three or four years down the road," so, but, but yeah, any, yeah, I would be for it, yes.
So more, what he's saying is, more likelihood is, put that name to it, the less he hangs out with you, so he'll see y'all together all the time. I'm just kidding, man. Anybody got any more questions for Kevin? Okay. Thanks, Kevin.
All right. I'll hang around just in case y'all got any questions.
Appreciate it, Judge.
And Elsa, I know you don't have a lot of information, do you want to?
I really just want to tell you, sorry, let you guys know, I think that overall, Fiddlin' went great over the weekend. Weather just kind of slowed things down early in the morning, but then we bounced back. There was ninety-one contestants from ten different states, and so we're already planning for next year.
Yeah. Thank you. We did have, we had people from as far away as Arizona that came in, kind of all over the southeast, Texas, I know Mississippi, Alabama, Tennessee, Illinois, I can't name them all, but we had a good showing, and what was good about this year, we actually had more contestants than we had last year, but we had a lot more, I don't want this to be taken the wrong way, but a lot more quality contestants. We had people that had won the national championship that came here and won. We had people that had won the Grand Masters Championship in Nashville. They, they competed this year. So we had a lot of high level. Ninety contestants is about average for us, between eighty and ninety. We have had as much as a hundred and thirty. So you never know, you know, but, but generally, we're going to be in that eighty to ninety range, I think, and, and that's a good, that's a good day, that's a good number to have because it's, Terry was there all day, it's, it's a lot to keep up with, so... But Ed Carnes did text me this afternoon, wanted me to especially thank tourism and the council and everybody involved that helped put it on and helped fund it. Litchfield is, is, is a pretty well-known little place now, and partially because of that contest, there's a lot of, we get a lot of people in here. We, we have had people in from as many as eighteen states and Canada one year, so it's, it's kind of put us on the map, and we enjoy doing it, so everybody, he wanted to express his appreciation to everybody too that helped, so, and I do too. It's, it's, it's a good thing for our community. Okay. Moving, moving this property up, what I'd like to do at this time is open the floor for a motion to, to go in with the county, purchase the property, and then we'll set up the, the committees of whoever wants to be involved and, and move forward with the farmer's market.
I make a motion.
Motion by Clayton. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Danny. All in favor? Two? Okay. All opposed? Okay. All right. All righty. We will move on now to, is there any other, are there any visitors? Tim, gentleman here with the fire department, Jason Colston?
Tim, come out, Tim, come on up with you.
Mayor, council, thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm Jason Colston with Atlantic Emergency Solutions. We represent Pierce Manufacturing, is the manufacturer of the fire trucks that, that we build and sell to customers throughout, throughout seven or eight states. I'm based out of Bowling Green, Kentucky, former history in the fire service, spent about twenty-six years down in Bowling Green on the fire department there, I've been retired for a couple of years, and now the regional account manager for, for Atlantic. So I think we're here tonight to talk a little bit about an aerial apparatus, and you, you currently have a nineteen eighty-seven aerial truck. So over the last couple of months, I've worked with the chief to propose, and I'm sure you have the, the proposal in front of you. We have, we have an aerial product that's, that's available in early twenty twenty-five. It's a hundred and seven-foot aerial apparatus that would be available for purchase that we've proposed to you for roughly one point four million dollars. We're kind of in a, with, with some approaching EPA emission standards. We're, we're kind of in a, uh, with, with some approaching EPA emission standards that are coming in 2027. Uh, they're, uh, quite frankly negatively impacting the fire truck manufacturers as well as, uh, the, the fire departments. With the new emission standards, the, uh, the motors are having to change for fire trucks. To the tune of, well, our current offerings are going away, um, the motors are being retooled, redesigned. Uh, and quite frankly, the cost for a, a new motor, just the engine alone on a fire truck. Uh, after January 1, 2026 is going to increase approximately a hundred thousand dollars. So with that in mind and kind of, you know, lead times where they are post-COVID, so on and so forth. We, we presented the chief, uh, a unit that we already have on order. It's already in the production cycle, uh, which will allow us to deliver that, like I said, you know, in the, uh, around March of 2025. Or we can adjust that based off, you know, budgetary needs or if we need to push it into, you know, you know, a new budget cycle to, to better fit, uh, your, your budget. We can certainly do that, but, um, you know, I'm here to answer, you know, any questions, uh, that you might have or have any conversations, so.
I assume the purchase price is written in stone, correct?
Um, so, so again, this is, this particular truck is one that we, we've had on order for a while. So, so with, with, uh, your approval, I would work with chief to go through that truck line item by line item. To see if there are things that we can adjust, change, delete, add, so on and so forth. But I, I'm confident that worst-case scenario is, is the, the number that we've proposed. There are some things that, uh, you know, I've gone through the truck pretty, pretty extensively. You know, there are some things that, you know, that, that we could change or reduce the cost of and, um, because of the lead time, we would, we've got the time, the ability to do that. Um, without having to re-engineer the trucks, so on and so forth. So we can save some money, um, I don't have a, a firm number until we dial that in, but, you know. Conceptually, you know, 10 to 15,000 dollars cheaper depending on, you know, what, what, what we, what the chief is open to changing and what fits the bill for them.
But I guess it could be more than two though, if we decide we want an eight-track tape or something like that.
Yeah, I, I've, I've built quite a few fire trucks, so like I said, I've gone through the 400-plus options to kind of make sure that we've got all the bases covered. You know, the, the essentials, the requirements, um, you know, some, uh, you know, the air pack seats, the eight-track players, whatever those might be. Uh, I feel, I feel pretty confident that we're, we're not going to exceed the proposed number.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what was the completion date, delivery date?
It's currently slated for, uh, March 15th, 2025.
Okay, could that be changed or is that pretty much?
You know, I anticipate that it's going to push back a little. Um, I, you know, I would anticipate, uh, probably June 2025 is, um. You know, based off, you know, based off kind of how things have been running and tracking, I would anticipate, uh, it, it being delayed a couple, couple of months.
Are you requiring any money upfront?
Uh, we don't require, the, the, the price that I proposed is the price that, that you owe when we deliver and you accept the truck. Um, if you elect to put any money down, uh, we, we do offer prepay discounts. Uh, so you would earn interest money, uh, based off the price of the truck and over the, the length, uh, that it takes us to build the truck. So, you know, if, um, so, yeah, uh, there, there's no money down, but you do have the option to prepay whatever amount you elect.
If we choose to prepay, I assume then we, your company's pretty sound financially?
Yes, sir.
You sure hate to prepay and then find out that it's an issue?
With the prepay, we usually, I'll provide you with a bid bond or a performance bond, uh, to protect your money as well. We usually include that with any, any prepayment of substantial amount, we, we definitely provide a performance bond to protect your, your, your money.
Was anything else, Tim, on the truck? You all went through it together, anything else that you know that you all would need?
Yeah, I mean, one thing, I mean, this, this particular fire truck does have front airbags and side rail protection, which is a, um, you know, it's, it, it's not a common feature on fire trucks. It's getting more common, right? You know, just like the cars that, that you all, uh, drive, I presume, uh, likely have airbags. This truck does have airbags on it, if that's a feature that, um, you know, that, that they would like to remove, you know, it's about a $10,000 option for airbags on a fire truck and side rail protection. So there are some things that, you know, the, you know, they obviously don't have airbags on their current units. Uh, but if it's something, you know, we can entertain, you know, some, some deletions, uh, but it would be certainly working with, with the council and with the chief to, to determine what that looks like, so.
But if we wait and a newer model comes out, how much more is it going to?
Um, so again, the, just the motor alone, the motor alone is gonna, gonna, it's going to increase the price of the truck about a hundred thousand dollars. So, uh, and the, the current, our current lead times are anywhere from 42 to 45 months. So that's the other thing with, as I mentioned, this truck has been on order for a while and, um, yeah, so that's, that's the advantage. You're gonna, you, you would be able to receive this truck, you know, within the next 18 months per se, is that right? Or, uh, otherwise, um, you're, or, let's see, March, yeah, roughly. Or if we start from scratch, have to build the truck, the price, uh, for this particular truck will be substantially higher. And you're looking at a 42 to a 45-month lead time, so.
Now, we talked one time about a used truck.
Sure.
But if we get a used truck, what do we get with it?
A used truck, so, um, and one thing I want to kind of point out is, you know, I know the chief is running a 1987, uh, currently. Um, the NFPA, which is National Fire Protection Association, they're, they're the, they're the one that put all the, all the standards and all the guidelines and all the regulations for the fire service, right? They're, they're, you know, they're what we're, uh, we drew bets to adhere to in the fire, in the fire industry. They, they're, and I actually brought a copy, um, they, they're, I'll just read it to you. Apparatus that were not manufactured to the applicable fire apparatus standards or that are over 25 years old should be replaced. Okay, so that's the recommendation from the NFPA 1901 standard. So I don't, I don't bring that up to discuss this current model, but as you evaluate used trucks. You know, and I, you know, I, I have access to used fire trucks as well. Uh, you know, a 2008 fire truck with 100,000 miles is 325,000 dollars, right? And you can, I've got a list, right? They vary anywhere from, you know, uh, a 2000 model, 275,000. There is a 2001 with 95,000 miles for 80,000 dollars. My point is those trucks are already 20 years old, right? Plus or minus a few years depending on which one we look at. If you're adhering to the standard, which, you know, all departments should be adhering to those standards, you've only got a small window to be able to utilize that truck over the next. Five, six, seven years depending on what model. So, you know, it, it's really difficult, especially in the current economy, um, to find a good used ladder truck. Many departments, they buy a ladder truck and they run it till the wheels fall off, right? And there's really, you know, it's 100-plus thousand miles on it and very little, uh, you know, very little useful life left, right? Because, I mean, ultimately, they've spent a lot of money, right? So they want to run that as long as they possibly can, 20, 25 years. Um, and then at that point, I mean, the trucks should be, you know, replaced.
So we're taking somebody else's, and I'd play it like this, somebody else's garbage.
Uh, you know, it depends, there, there, I mean, the, every, you know, you, sometimes you may fi, I mean, you may get lucky and find one, right? Uh, that's, you know, you know, fire chief changes or, you know, you've got a merger between fire districts and something and something may pop up.
But how would we know?
Um, you've got to keep your eye out and, you know, and, and, you know, and, and be, be always, you know, be on the look. There are used truck brokers and again, we, you know, we sell used trucks, but finding, and, and let me be even more specific. What, what chief is, is looking for here is, you know, at least a 75-foot ladder in length. And, and he's got to determine whether 75 or 100 foot is more appropriate for the city of Litchfield. I would argue that 100 foot, depending on your access to building is, access to buildings is, um, and he gets full credit for his insurance service organization, for his ratings and all that. He gets full credit with a 100-foot ladder. But he's got to, uh, you, he also, you know, would be looking for a single axle, right? He can't, he was not looking for a tandem axle ladder truck. Yeah, it's just a large apparatus and maneuvering around the city and, you know, I think he's looking to run this truck as his primary response vehicle. So, so having a tandem axle is just not, uh, not, not, uh, not an option. Uh, so that kind of limits that, that, uh, what's available to him in the used market and even in the new, so.
It was in the notice and I didn't, I forgot, what's the warranty on, on the truck?
Uh, so we have various, uh, multiple warranties. The truck bumper to bumper is one year. The frame rails on our trucks are 50 years, right? The aerial device is 10 years. Uh, there's a long list of, you know, a lot of the components, much like your car, right? Your transmission warranty, you have various warranties for various components, but bumper, bumper to bumper, everything included is one year. But then like, you know, like I said, it's going to vary depending on, depending on the product. The engine's eight years, transmission's five years, you know, paint's 10 years, so there's, there's, there's a whole, there's a pretty good stack of warranties, so.
You said it was ordered, who did, who ordered it?
So Atlantic Emergency is the company I work for. We, we have, uh, we have the ability to, to order trucks. Essentially, this truck is on order for us to be a demo unit, right? So that we would travel around and show, uh, customers. Um, so we have, you know, about 25 trucks on order that we've already ordered in advance. And we ordered quite a few trucks to get ahead of the upcoming EPA emission standard changes, just because of the impact that it's going to have and, and the lead times, so.
How long do you keep your demo trucks?
Uh, till somebody writes a check. Yeah, um, yeah, till somebody writes a check, yeah, so. Yeah, usually, you know, at this point, our demo trucks are selling before they get completed, just because the lead times are, are what they are.
So your list of used trucks, is it a detailed list or is it just names or is?
Um, I've got the year, the length of the ladder, the, uh, how many miles it has on it and the price, that's, um, yeah.
And that's a list that you continuously update and have?
I, I just, uh, um, yeah, I just.
That you offer?
Yeah, that I just kind of ran through and kind of, uh, put together a quick list of the, the ones that were available that were single axle, um, and, yeah.
So on your list of those, uh, that are used, which one is the newest?
Um, the newest would be a 2012. 78-foot ladder truck with 60,000 miles and the price on that is 449,000.
Do you warrant that?
Do what?
Do you warrant that, a used truck?
Um, there, there comes with a small warranty, yeah.
Pretty much you buy as is then, for the most part?
Yeah, I mean, the truck will have gone through its, its required testing and certifications, yeah. But, um, yeah, it comes with a, I think a 90-day warranty on it.
If I could ask the chief, chief, what's your recommendation?
Probably go with new for being. Get that 25, 35-year truck instead of maybe just a 10 or 15-year truck.
Thanks.
I know it's a big expense, but we got to buy it sometime or another.
How many, how many trucks do you have, Tim, that'll fall under that 25-year?
63, which that, that one's going in reserve. So that's, and then the next, all this is the 99 one, which is 62, 92. But the other 88 miles going in reserve, it'll be special called if needed.
I couldn't hardly hear you, do you have three that are above the 25-year? Is that what I heard?
Yeah.
So if we bought one new, at least we would have a good 25 years out of that, correct?
Yes, yes.
And it would be the first truck out?
In town.
In town, water supply.
No medical seats, just.
Right.
Do you have any type of funds built up that could possibly go towards a down payment?
I collect dues every year.
I mean, that wouldn't wipe you out. I mean, that's not the goal.
I figured it out today and I could maybe spare because about all of it's divvied out. Cause I already have one truck payment and it's 37,000 dollars. I collect 130,000 dollars a year. Then I had to give the county 20,000 dollars of that to dispatch us, the dispatch system. Then the city takes, is it 20%?
I'm not sure what figure Sabrina uses for uniforms and fuel and. There's one more thing.
I think it's 25%, which is, comes up to 11,000 something dollars. And anything that's used in the city and out of the county, in the county. We usually, the city does half and the county does half, any equipment that's used out in the county, so.
Terry, when we finish making adjustments to their, the spreadsheet that I keep up for, the fire dues, I talked to Tim about it the other day. The 87,000 dollars that we, uh, paid this past year to pay off the fire truck hadn't come out of that, so. Um, and then, of course, we just had to make the payment to PNC, which was in your old bill list this time. And then the last two, um, 911 bills come in, so I think he's down to about 149,000 before Sabrina figures that other. I think it's between 11 and 14,000 dollars for, for the other expenses, um, once she starts on the audit stuff, so. But we're, we're coming up to that point to where he's going to start getting money in again because we'll send out bills in October, so.
What's the length left on the loan for the 37,000?
I'd have to look and see, I'm not sure, but I can check on that.
Six years?
Wouldn't he girded in with the building?
No, that was a different, that was E2. And I, I don't know why it was linked in with the building to start with either, I have no idea. It should have been paid off a long time ago.
Gina, I can look at that before you leave, the filing cabinet's open back there, so I can look at it real quick.
He's probably close.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Chief, did you say you're going to keep the old truck in reserve?
Yes, and we'll use it for training purposes too.
Okay. He'd probably give you a pretty good price.
No, we couldn't.
On trade-in.
We can sell him the old Quinn.
Do we have any that we could, I mean, if we're going to get a new one?
That one?
The Quinn, yeah.
So, so you could sell that one?
Jason, you want to buy one?
We need to get the new one first, right?
I can do anything with a 1987, but I can certainly.
Especially when you got this.
Yeah, I can certainly, uh, yeah, I can put you in touch with people.
So are we getting more bids or this, cause that's what we were going to ask me, uh, sort of bids?
Yeah, I think he was.
Are there any more bids other than this one?
No, we haven't put it out for bid yet, so. I don't know what, I mean, somebody's going to have to give me some specs because I don't know how to spec that.
Yeah, and if I may intervene, um, you know, and, and I'm, I'm grateful to, to bid this truck or do whatever we need. Just recognize that this is the only truck that we currently have, so, and it's certainly open for sale to, to anyone. So I would encourage you, if you are going to bid, to expedite that process. And I think I've spoke to someone here about, you know, you, I mean, you have the ability. Uh, I know the city of Litchfield is already registered through Sourcewell. Um, technically, this truck has already been bid through that, through that agency, so. Um, you know, the, the body has the, the option to purchase off that cooperative contract. If you all, uh, choose to do so, um, it's already priced, it's already discounted, so on and so forth through, through Sourcewell or through HGAC is another option. And those are predominantly, that's the, the way we are selling the most, the, the selling fire trucks nowadays. Very few, uh, go through the sealed, the sealed bid process, but we're certainly willing to do. Very few go through the sealed, the sealed bid process, but we're certainly willing to do that. I just would encourage you with, I mean, this, this sells, I'd, you know, we don't, we, we don't have a good option, right? So, and, so.
What is, what is the benefit to using a, a group like Sourcewell?
Uh, it's already, the price is already established. It's already bid, it's a, you know, it's gone through, through that process, right? So, so you, you have a number, you don't have to do anything other than, you know, I have to fill out the, fill out a bunch of paperwork and, and make sure we, we get the right price based off that, that cooperative contract agreement, um, and that's it, so.
Erlene, correct me if I'm wrong, but that is not on state contract, right? And that's the way our, we're through general bidding, not procurement. So I still think that we're going to have to bid that out because that's that gray area that Erlene has been talking about to.
I, I would go back to the advice I gave you at previous meetings, that there's no case law, there's no statute saying that it falls under, uh, where you don't have to bid it out. There's nothing that says you can, nothing that says you can, so it's that gray area. I would recommend I would go ahead and, and put, bid in an advertisement in the newspaper just to be on the safe side.
From my understanding, Sourcewell's basically been approved by the state of Kentucky. It's been bid out, basically, if we, is that, is that correct?
The majority of trucks that I sell are, are through Sourcewell or HGAC. And I, and, and I agree wholeheartedly with, I mean, I, you know, many attorneys have evaluated and, and looked at this, Bowling Green, Paducah, Hopkinsville, Murray, I mean, I've got, you know, Shepherdsville. I've got a ton of cities or municipalities that are buying neither through Sourcewell or through HGAC. So, uh, there is no fire trucks on Kentucky state contract, much, you know, like your police vehicles or other city vehicles or, you know, there are, you know, the, the state of Kentucky does not have fire trucks on state procurement, so. But, yeah, I'm, we're happy to do either. I just, you know, it, you know, with, with the sealed bid, and like I said, I would, I would recommend, you know, moving quickly before the, and, and I'm not a pressure salesman, I'm a fireman, right? But, you know, I don't want to see the truck slip away, right?
If you all do decide to bid, uh, I think it's too late to get it in Saturday's paper because I would have to have something to them tomorrow unless you all can get me some bid specs pretty quick to get to them. But I think we could get it in the paper as soon as next Saturday, but it's up to you all how you all want to do it.
I thought it was decided at the last meeting after we talked about this, that it needed to be bid out because it was over.
Yes.
Okay, well, I will make a motion to open up the, what's it called?
Bidding?
I thought we did that last meeting.
Yeah.
And then who do you?
I haven't gotten anything to.
So do you, does Tim need to work with you and give you what you need? Tim, can you work with Lori, like, maybe quickly tomorrow? So that she can get everything ready, so we don't need a motion because we already did that?
No, we talked, that's what we, you know, that was the decision last week, so.
Okay.
As long as you all are still good with that, that motion stands.
So Tim, come down here as soon as you can tomorrow so we can get the ball rolling on this. All right, well, thank you so much for coming.
Jason, I appreciate it.
Erlene, is it possible to get an AG opinion?
I just got to get to my.
Do you need a prayer?
I've already got an opinion from KLC.
I appreciate it.
And their opinion was?
Yes, sir, I'm happy to be here, thanks for your time.
It's a gray area and there's nothing that says you can, nothing that says you can.
You couldn't get an opinion from AG, it'd take forever though, I assume.
Well, I, I don't care to go in.
Thanks, Tim.
Because if AG says it's okay, then at least you've got, we've got solid grounds to avoid going through.
And we'll have that for future.
For future, so that'd be, but usually, my experience, it'd take a while to get anything from them. So you may, it may not be worthwhile, other than for future.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and do that.
Thanks.
Jason, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Tim, you also. Any questions about that before we hear our comments, before we move on? All right, next we've got the second and final reading of RZ-two-three-dash-one-one-seven, ordinance to rezone from R5 to R2. Tyler? Are you doing the reading, Erlene, or is it?
An ordinance amending and adopting an amended zoning map entitled Zoning Map Litchfield, Kentucky by changing the district classification.
The property located in Litchfield, Kentucky is here and after described from R-dash-five multifamily to R-dash-two, single-family, medium density. Whereas the Litchfield Planning Commission of Litchfield, Kentucky on May eighth, twenty twenty-three, held a public hearing on application number RZ-dash-twenty-three-dash-one-seventeen. The property is currently owned by Sammy Joe Strickland and is designated as property having a PVA number zero-eight-four-dash-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-nine-six-point-zero-B, being more particularly described in deed book five-twenty-one, page four-seventy-six. Records of the Grayson County Clerk's Office and being located approximately three-hundred-and-fifty west of the Watkinswood Drive and Patty's Place intersection, Litchfield, Kentucky. The request asked for a change from R-dash-five multifamily to R-dash-two, single-family, medium density. And whereas city council members conducted a review of the record and evidence presented before the Litchfield Planning Commission, and its recommendation is that the zoning map amendment be approved as affects this property. Its recommendation is attached and incorporated in here by reference. And now therefore be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky as follows. Boundaries of the district is shown on district map entitled Zoning Map. Litchfield, Kentucky being same, is hereby amended for reasons adopted, all of which is made a part hereof, is fully set out herein, including the rezoning request from the Planning Commission dated five-nine twenty twenty-three to the Litchfield City Councils. So the property is described as follows. Property description, refer to property description, PVA number zero-eight-four-dash-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-nine-six-point-zero-B, deed book five-twenty-one, page four-seventy-six. Records of the Grayson County Clerk's Office and being located approximately three-hundred-and-fifty feet west of the Watkinswood Drive and Patty's Place intersection, Litchfield, Kentucky, four-two-seven-five-four. Now zone R-dash-two, single-family, medium density, after the adoption of this ordinance. And we'll, we'll need a roll call vote.
Can I get a motion in a second to do the roll call, take a motion? Motion by Tony, second by Billy, roll call, Denny?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Next we have recommendation from the Planning Commission to rezone six-oh-six North Main Street from B-one neighborhood business to C-one highway commercial. All right, for those that aren't familiar, this property was the Stevenson's Paint Store years ago. The Planning Commission met on this zone change and found that this property previously was zoned inappropriate. The zone classification it was given did not permit the type of business that was being done on the property. So that's why the commission recommends that this be changed to a commercial zoning to allow those types of retail businesses to remain. Right now it's being renovated. Any questions for Tyler on that property?
I've got one. Tyler, is the owner going to start selling eggs out of that place?
I'm not sure if that's what they're going to be doing.
Could you tell me if they're needing the community for that?
I can suggest that.
Thanks.
Okay, we need, we need a first and second on this particular.
You'll need to take a vote to accept the recommendation. And then at the next meeting, we'll do a roll call to accept the ordinance.
I'll make a motion. Motion by Clayton.
My second.
Second by Gina, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. An ordinance amending and adopting an amended zoning map entitled Zoning Map Litchfield, Kentucky by changing the district classification of the property located in Litchfield, Kentucky is here and after described from B-dash-one neighborhood business to C-dash-one highway commercial. Whereas the Litchfield Planning Commission of Litchfield, Kentucky on July tenth, twenty twenty-three, held a public hearing on application numbers RZ-dash-twenty-three-dash-one-nineteen. The property is currently owned by William Thompson and is designated as property having a PVA number zero-eight-three-dash-zero-eight-dash-zero-four-dash-zero-six-seven, being more particularly described in deed book five-fifteen, page four-oh-six. Records of the Grayson County Clerk's Office and being located at six-oh-six North Main Street, Litchfield, Kentucky. The request asked for a change from B-dash-one neighborhood business to C-dash-one highway commercial. And whereas city council members conducted a review of the record and evidence presented before the Litchfield Planning Commission, and its recommendation is that the zoning map amendment be approved as affects this property. Its recommendation is attached and incorporated here and by reference. And now therefore be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky as follows. Boundaries of the district is shown on district map entitled Zoning Map, Litchfield, Kentucky, being same is hereby amended for reasons adopted, all of which is made a part hereof, is fully set out herein, including the rezoning request from the Planning Commission dated seven-eleven twenty twenty-three to the Litchfield City Councils. So the property is described as follows. Property description, refer to property description, PVA number zero-eight-three-dash-zero-eight-dash-zero-four-dash-zero-six-seven, deed book five-fifteen, page four-oh-six. Records of the Grayson County Clerk's Office and being located at six-oh-six North Main Street, Litchfield, Kentucky, four-two-seven-five-four. Now zone C-dash-one highway commercial after the adoption of this ordinance.
And we don't need any action on this?
No, none tonight.
Okay. All right, thank you, Erlene. Uh, next on the agenda is approval of the May twenty twenty-three financial statement. I think we've had copies of this passed out last meeting, so if there are any questions, we'll entertain them at this time. If there are no questions, we'll, uh, open the floor for a motion to accept the financial statement.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Terry. Second by Gina, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Let's go down to unfinished business. We met earlier about the pay scale. But we've been working on that for some time with, with the new pay scale and, and classifications with jobs and everything. Just wanted to give you guys an opportunity to ask any questions or, of anything you might have about that. And if there are any questions or anything, we'll, we'll probably have it ready for a first reading next, next meeting.
Right. What we talked, for the ones that wasn't in there, what we talked about in the meeting was having it ready for the first reading, uh, the first meeting of August, do the second one in August. And then make it go into effect, uh, like, for the week beginning September fourth. That would give time for HR to go through everybody's pay after it's finalized and, and do any adjustments to anybody that, that needs those adjustments. So that is, that is our plan. And I give Gina, you and Clayton, copies of everything that I give them in the meeting, so. And I just want to say thank you all. This is, this has been a long road for me working on this, and I really appreciate the cooperation and working and trying to get this done for our employees.
The only thought was, I still think there may be consideration to making the city clerk the great scale, maybe the highest of, of everybody. But that's my thoughts.
And that's something we can, we can talk about and, and, um, if you want to drop by one day or something, we can look at that, Denny, and try to make any adjustments or anything like that, or give some options for the next, for the next meeting. Does anybody else have any questions for, for Lori on that? I know she has worked diligently on this, probably for the last couple of years. And it has been a lot of work, so. Appreciate Lori being able to take the time to do that too, because she doesn't, she doesn't seem to have a lot of spare time, so.
Well, your work is greatly appreciated, and I think that our employees are going to greatly appreciate this as well.
Thank you. That was my whole goal behind it is to, for our employees, they need to reap the benefit off of this. It hasn't been updated in eighteen years, so.
Yeah. Okay. All right, any other questions or comments about the fire truck purchase? We're just waiting on getting that, that bid process started. Code enforcement, amended orders for condemned property. Tyler, I'm going to guess that's you.
I talked to Tyler last week, we're going to meet later this weekend to hopefully have something good to present next meeting.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, one last thing on the pay scale. For the other two that wasn't in there, this is contingent on utilities approving that. So just wanted to make you all aware of that. I don't think there's going to be any issue there. Dwight has worked with me on this quite a bit, so I'll get that to them Thursday night at their meeting, and I don't foresee any, any issues with that, so.
Okay. Uh, next we've got on the agenda, new business, any other unfinished business? Let me get, let me go there, I'll always get that. Terry?
No.
Judy?
No, sir.
Clayton?
Well, I don't know whether this is old or new. Aaron? Um, I was talking, a gentleman stopped me and was talking to me about out on Shaw Station Road. And they've got a lot of semis going through there and turned those signs down. And they were supposed to order new signs to put up. And Wesley told him that they were there, but they hadn't been put up yet, and he was wondering about them.
We have not received the signs yet.
Oh, you haven't received the sign?
No, we're, we're having them made, we have speed limit signs made, um, we're having no-through-truck signs made because in Kuiper subdivision, we're having the same problem. So we've put up what we have, uh, we're getting some big signs made, and, what's, what's his name? Oh, Billy Mack out there?
Yeah.
Yes, we're trying to, me, I think me and Tyler have talked about it as well, trying to find the, the right wording to put on the sign.
Right.
As far as, you know, you can, it goes through, I mean, you don't have to turn around here in some sense. But, yeah, we're, we're getting it took care of.
Yeah, we just, you know, we just stop them from going in there, that, but that's.
Well, there's a sign, there's a sign.
I mean, there's no-through, there's, you know.
Already.
There's no-through-truck signs already.
They're tore down?
Well, there was a semi run over one of them the other night.
I'll say, last time Wes and I were out there, they weren't tore down, but.
I don't know.
Oh, when, when was, I don't, I didn't, I did not know this.
This last, this last week, they said there was one came through there and tore the sign down and turned around in Mr. Blocker's yard across from Billy Max.
Yeah.
And, uh, they liked to never get him out there, they just ruined in some of their property out there. But he said it was tore down, whether it was put back up yet or not, I don't know.
I'm, I'm assuming no because I did not know about it.
Right.
But I will take care of it tomorrow.
I mean, it's, it's all over town because they, they, they even come through on Hilltop.
Yes.
And are going through people's yards there, and there's a big old sign.
Yeah, well, I mean, like Gulf Central, Kuiper, all that area, we have signs, we have signs up. You know, we, we have signs up saying that your GPS is wrong. I mean, I don't know what other extent you would have to do to.
We basically closed two railroad crossings because of it.
I mean, yeah, so.
David, are you getting any, getting any calls, or your units?
Several, we do. Most time out in Kuiper subdivision, to be honest with you.
Do they cite them?
They have, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think you all have had some property damage at the city and, you know.
Okay.
They take all that.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I think their GPS and stuff's really bad to take them to Kuiper subdivision.
Right.
And it's, it's all GPS, you know, uh, it's what's doing it.
I know they used to have them over on Wayman Drive so bad, coming up through there too, and it's.
Yeah, we get, we probably average one or two a week at least.
Right.
Maybe more.
Appreciate it, that, that's all, Mayor.
Okay, Gina?
No, good.
Denny?
I've got a couple more, thanks. Uh, Aaron, I think I talked to you beforehand, and I've had a couple complaints about the, uh, getting nails and tires over by the transfer station.
Yes.
With all the, the roofing, so, uh, maybe if you all could run the, pick up the, the metal.
Yes, well, typically, we, yeah, typically we try and, if we have the personnel to do it, we try and do it at least once a week. And then we have a sweeper that goes on our skid steer. try and do it at least once a week, and then we have a sweeper that goes on our skid steer. But, I mean, y'all have been over there, you know how busy it is. It's kinda hard to run the street sweeper and throw stuff on the vehicles while they're trying to unload, so it's, we, we play it by ear on that.
Yeah.
But we try at least to run the magnet.
Where do you do? He, he lives over there, he's had to replace his, buy new, four, four new tires, and even if that, he's had that three of those new ones plugged since last week.
I got you. I got you. There is, I'm not gonna lie, there's a ton of roofing nails.
Yeah.
There's a ton.
Thanks. The other businesses relate to the pickleball court. Looks like Scotty's had probably underbid that, so, uh, may get them a lot cheaper. Looks like tourism's gonna help us maybe pay for every bit of it. Which is great news for citizens of Litchfield. The only other thing about the pickleball, I, somebody asked about the location of it, and, um, I told them we're pretty limited on where we can put it. Uh, and the ideal, uh, over there, they thought it was gonna be kinda isolated, but I kinda explained to them, once a bypass goes through, that that will not be isolated. That'll be a high, high-traffic area. And, um, I've talked to some people, including my associate here beside of me, about the, some concern about the smells over there, but that does not seem to be an issue with the people. I've talked to a couple of the people that live there. It doesn't seem to be, gonna be an issue, so just update councilmen.
Anything else, Gini?
No.
Okay. Thanks. Lori, unfinished business? Erlene?
No.
Erin? David?
No, sir.
Tyler?
No, sir.
Heather? Okay. Let's move on.
Hi, David.
Did you, oh, you did, okay. You were so quiet over there, I forgot you were here.
Okay, first, Friday night, we had, uh, midnight swim for the Fiddling Fest fireworks. Um, huge, huge success. We, last year was a cluster, it was my second month on the job, and Tammy wasn't there, so I blame it on her, but, um, we had an issue getting everybody in quickly. This year, we had everyone in by 10 minutes after eight. We had reached capacity by 8:40. So we, I mean, we let out 500 bands, and there was, I mean, we were charging, but the little kids, we weren't even banding. We knew if their parents were gonna stay with them, we, we weren't even banding them, so it was huge. And I'm just gonna give a shout out to the LAC, because our employees this year are exceptional. Great, great group of kids, great group of kids. But that's not why I'm here. Um, the baseball board has talked and met, and they are requesting that we host fall ball this year, a fall ball league. Um, Tammy had spoke with, with mayor about this. Um, we're asking that the payments be made in the form of a check, because anytime that we've tried to host fall ball before, we don't have enough persi, particip, participation. And it gets to be a cluster trying to refund everyone money, so we thought if we do solely checks, keep it with the, you know, application, if we don't have enough, we can send them back. Um, but, let's see, we're only gonna have coach pitch minor major for fall ball, no T-ball. This is basically practice, you know, for the, the elders. Uh, the baseball board would like for us to include with this, um, entry fee, the purchase of a T-shirt that just simply says Litchfield Fall Ball. So we're asking you to give us approval to amend the budget, because we didn't put the T-shirt sales in there, I don't think. I don't think it'll be over $2,000. I think that's a huge, I think that's over what we would spend, but I'm just asking for you all to let us amend the budget when Sabrina sees fit to pay for these shirts. Also with that, I didn't get to do the challenger league. Um, we had 12 participants sign up, so I had already decided in my head that I was doing it wrong anyway, because I want their peers to be there, I want cheerleaders there, I want this to be a big thing for the special needs. And so with that being said, I want to go forward with fall, um, with the challenger league during regular fall ball season, so that they are mixed in with their peers, and the kids do get to cheer on their friends. So, um, of course, that's all been funded, you know, already, so that won't cost anything. Like, I want this, the challenger league playing the same time that 8U or 10U or 12U's playing, so that they are there with the kids that they go to school with. Because we all know that as you age, you get meaner, but my mother-in-law worked as a school teacher, I'm talking about children, worked as a school teacher, and she said, you know, like your elementary school kids, they rallied around your special needs. They didn't have any issues, you know? And I think that for, for them to go out on the field and do what the regular kids are doing and watch them do it, I think that is just gonna be even better for that program. So, uh, but the program will run for six weeks.
So you think you'll have more than...
I hope. I hope. Um...
When do you start?
It'll start mid Sept, mid-August.
So before, I mean, why schools?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. It'll run for six weeks. Um, I think the second or third week of August and then run through September. But, um, and I also wondered if maybe that was part of the holdback with the participation for the challenger league, because I was trying to do it outside of school hours. But I thought that might be easier for the parents, but...
How much are you signing up for?
For fall ball, $50. And that would include the T-shirt. That's not a uniform, that's just...
Oh, a T-shirt.
Yeah.
Does Caneyville Clarkson do fall ball?
You know, I have heard, um, I've heard that say that Caneyville was going to, but I have not heard anything on Clarkson.
I thought it's all Caneyville's.
Yeah. And I don't know how we can work it out, but I've, we've had some parents come forward that their kids played more in Caneyville than they played here. And I know, I mean, I know you're gonna have it, but anyway, that's just something that's been...
What's your age jersey?
Um, 8, 10, and 12U.
So our fall ball will only be played in Litchfield?
We went countywide with the spring program, so I don't know that, I don't know, I mean, that's your call, I guess.
No, it'd be your all's call.
Well, I can't make that call. How about that?
Your board? Your baseball board? That's a good decision.
Yeah. Yeah. I would think that if we wanted to play more than one or two teams each, 'cause I don't know how much participation we're gonna have, it might be more feasible to play with the other communities in the county, in the county.
Why would they ask another cities to join in?
We haven't yet, no.
Those of Litchfield?
Yeah. I just wanted your all's approval to amend, so we can get those shirts.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. But anyways, polls winding down, we got two weeks, and we're just running wild. It's fun.
Hey, Christie?
Are you planning another night since you saw some tests with this one?
Yes, next, this coming Friday. I think it's either this Friday or this Saturday, but I think it's Friday night. This, this will be our third one this year.
It's always been a good deal.
The kids love it.
Thank God you got them in so fast, 'cause I've sat over here and it's taking them.
Forever.
To get them in.
Forever. But we had four of us outside in the, on the line, and like we were doing a buddy system. One had the money, one had the bands, and we were, and then anyone, we also went down through there and was explaining the rules, you know, take this to your car if you have it. But we also let, we also had a season pass line, so they could bypass us and get on around and get in, but it was super successful.
My question was gonna be, uh, when we did the budget, did we plan for fall ball for like concessions at all? So that might be something else we might have to look at.
We didn't, um, but I do, I, I mean, I'll have to ask Tammy when she comes back tomorrow, she got to go see Beyonce.
And they may have put enough fluff in there, but just to keep in mind, that might be something else that we'd have to...
Absolutely. Um, and I can come back and ask for that if I need to, but, um, we cushion it somewhat for the tournaments that we have, 'cause we run tournaments plenty.
I'll see if something for fall.
We didn't have fall ball, 'cause I don't know that they've ever successfully had one since I've been...
No. Co-ed was about the only thing we really had in fall.
Mm-hmm. And that's what we were talking, this is contingent if we have the participation, that's why we wanna do just checks, so we can make it as cut and dry as possible. But anyways... I don't know how many nights a week, but there's gonna be like six, six dates. Six weeks, six weeks. I don't know. You'll have to talk to Tammy about the, she went to that meeting, I didn't. Wear the kids out. All right. If you don't have anything else for me, that's it.
Go home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie.
Thanks, Christie.
Thank you.
Okay. New business, firework ordinance. I think we, want some discussion on that. I think Clayton had, had mentioned it to me that, um...
I've sent it to Lori and Erlene. Uh, we had a lot of complaints about the fireworks going on 11, 12, 1, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, and, um, after I looked back on the ordinance, and most of y'all were sitting on the council in 2017.
Yes, ma'am.
Whenever you amended it, and I guess I just kinda needed to know your thoughts on why you extended it, or if there was reasoning behind extending it to midnight on those dates that were, uh, specified instead of ending it at 10 a.m. or 10 p.m.? They were just...
They were the fourth, they were the first.
And it was, I mean, one of them was Memorial Day.
I think they were just thinking about national holidays that, that might...
So could, could, I mean, I'm perfectly fine with, I, I go out like a light, there's fireworks don't wake me up.
Yeah, it don't bother me.
Um, but a lot of people, they did. So I mean, I would be perfectly fine with leaving like the December 31st at midnight, because I mean, that one, that's kinda when that holiday really kicks off. But I mean, 10 p.m., the people still have a good hour, hour and 15 minutes of good solid darkness on July 3rd and Labor Day and Memorial Day if they decided to shoot off fireworks. So what are your thoughts on amending it back to 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. with the exception of December 3rd, or December 31st and January 1st? I mean, what, I couldn't have been the only one who was getting phone calls, texts.
My, my thought is you're people that work the different shifts. I mean, you have a lot of people that work second shift or different shifts, and they don't get home till 11:00. And I don't, I don't think the difference between 10 and midnight is critical on a holiday.
If they actually stopped at midnight, that would be really good.
Granted, but changing that's not gonna change that.
Exactly. That's what I was giving you.
But after it goes past its time, that's when Davis guys pick it up.
Yeah, and, and hit. Right.
So, you be talking to him.
We do, we do.
And they stop.
Yes, they do.
But, but then, 30 minutes later, they may start again. But what I was gonna, one thing I wanted to bring up on this ordinance here, and, and I found it out this year talking to different people. In, in subsection B, uh, where it says fireworks may only be used ignited, fired, and exploded between hours of 10 a.m. and 10 p.m., I think when a lot of people read that, that means 365 days a year.
Right.
And, and, I mean, we had, I, I talked to people, I said, you can't be shooting fireworks now. Well, your ordinance says we can, because it says between 10 and 10. And then it goes down and it specifies the other days. I think there's a little confusion there, and maybe if you took, if you reevaluated it and maybe looked at wording it a different way and took that out, I think that might help some, because, you know, fireworks start around here two weeks prior.
And two weeks after.
And, and two weeks after.
Going wild last night in my neighborhood.
And, and you know, you go to talk to people about it and say, look, you can't be shooting them, they say, well, wait a minute.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, yeah, we can, because it's 10 to 10, and it's not 10 yet. And I said, yeah, but there's specified days. Well, it don't say it up there, so I'm just, I'm just wondering.
Here's my thing, though, and Terry asked what everybody thought. We've got a 10 p.m., 10 p.m. noise ordinance that we really don't have, first of all. That's, that's just in all our minds, that we need to work on. If that's something we wanna do, we need to address that. As far as whatever till 10 at night, the rest of the year, how restrictive do we wanna be as a city?
I think that's what we talked about here.
To, to, to try to, uh, uh, we get a lot of that restrictive stuff with our federal government, state government, how strict do we wanna be as a city, uh, to...
And there's not a state guideline that leads it to the cities?
It's legal, it's a legal item now. It's, you know, it's, hey, I'm, I'm, they need to stop at 10, I guess, and 12 on the holidays. I guess where I come from more so than changing an ordinance is to make sure that if they're breaking that ordinance, that they get dealt with by law enforcement, and if it comes to going back a second or third time, then we cite them in, in, for breaking that ordinance, rather than try to govern everything that, that anybody does. You know, that's, I mean, I think you, I think you can go overboard with governing.
Over there the other night, the police came, there was some people called, their dogs had run in nuts, an older couple trying to sleep, they couldn't sleep. I'm getting calls, uh, you know, my husband's sick, he's in, uh, heart surgery, and they just bow, 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 bow. Well, uh, a couple of units went over there and talked to the people, and it wasn't 10 o'clock. They said, went back and explained, it's, you know, okay, then when 10 o'clock come, that was fine, but quarter after 10, they just had to show theirselves again, that they weren't, wasn't gonna be told what to do. And bowed, there it went again. And they'd wait, some way or somehow they know when somebody's close, and then they would do it again. So, you know, that's, that's the calls I was getting, is just a lot of elderly people and, and stuff.
If we changed that ordinance, is it gonna stop that? That's my point. The result's the same. Either, either the police are gonna stop it, or it's gonna keep going. I mean, that's, that's the bottom line. Just putting words on paper is not gonna affect anyone.
That's what I was, those were the calls I was getting. I'm sure that Terry was getting some of them too.
Yeah.
We got a lot of calls in that area.
Yeah.
Because they just, and they were doing it, some of the people, they were doing it because they were defying your units coming by and saying, close her down at 10, and then they went back and did it again. So, you know.
Okay. David? If you have to go back a second, third time on them, can your guys handle that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we, we'll take care of it.
Site them, whatever you have to do.
You would think after once, if I come back, you're getting paid.
Yeah.
Done deal.
I mean, they're doing...
Make a cap out of it.
Yeah.
Your units are doing a good job, it's, it's, it's just that they, they know when to do it and to shut it down, and then...
And we fall right in the middle. I looked at some other ordinances and other cities, and some go to 12:30, and they extend the days, like they start their holiday season, the end of June, and go to like July 5th. So we're a little bit in the middle. Um, I think Elizabeth Town goes to 11:30, Bowling Green goes to 12:30, so Beaver Dam's right at 12 with us, so we're just right there in the middle of what, what other cities are doing. I would recommend the fine schedule, you know, that's, that's what I would do.
Do what?
I would recommend a fining is what I would do, if you have someone that's a multiple.
I, I personally think that's the direction you go, because nothing we do, whether we
whether we put it on paper or ask people, whatever, is, some people are not gonna get it until they get it. And, uh, if David is good with, you guys go back, cite them. And, uh, go back again, cite them again, you know. I'll back you up on that. I think most of the council will too.
Yep.
These are ordinance for a fine, or we just?
I'm not sure about that.
I think the fireworks is built into the nuisances.
It is.
Yeah.
It's the.
Reference five hundred dollars, up to five hundred dollars. I think it even says misdemeanor.
Yeah.
But we do also need to look at that ten PM curfew, the rest of the time noise curfew, because we don't currently have any ordinance that states that. We just kinda say it and hope it sticks, so.
I think basically we just pulled it off the fireworks ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, and kinda used it and,
Yeah.
but that's, that's something, uh, probably Earlene, we need to look at, at updating and, and getting on paper. Because we will be challenged on it if we don't have an ordinance in place.
Sure.
Okay. Any other comments about the fireworks or questions with David or anything? Okay. New business, Billy? Terry?
Well, we're on the animal shelter committee and I just wanted to make sure that you all are aware that they do have their animal shelter shirts in. They are super cute, good quality, and go buy the shirts.
Have you tied that?
You can probably wrap a rubber band around it and dip it down in some bleach and there you go.
Yeah. They used to have tie-dye.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Duty?
No, sir.
Clayton, new business?
No, just thanking David and Aaron, you guys and the fire department for helping, doing everything y'all did. You know, you, you all really do a good job every, every year and appreciate everything that y'all do through this fiddling convention and the whole year. You know, y'all just don't get enough credit. Everybody takes you for granted. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Gina? Danny?
I, I've been approached by a minister in town and he requested us to consider having a, a opening prayer similar to what the county does. And, um, he would even supply ministry thought on an altering basis if we wanted to do that. I know the senate, the congress do it, Washington, the house, uh, the representatives in Frankfurt and the senate in Frankfurt does it, and apparently the county does it. So, just something you guys can think about. Maybe next meeting we can vote on whether we wanna, after the pledge of allegiance, start with the, also prayer. That's it.
If everyone mulled that over and we'll, we'll put it on the next agenda and see what everyone's thoughts are on it. Lori? Earlene?
No.
Aaron? David?
No, sir.
Tyler?
No, sir.
Heather? Ruby? Pudgy? All right, guys. That being said, any other business? Anybody got any other business?
Uh, the chamber luncheon's August tenth, so if you, anybody wants to go to that, just let me know, no later than noon on the seventh, so.
Okay. Chamber is August tenth. Let Lori know by August seventh, please. I will, at this time, entertain a motion adjourned. Clayton?
Second.
Second, but Gina, all in favor?
Aye.